Now being 6 o'clock on February 26, I'll call the Selectmen's Meeting to order. We are going to take a quick recess. Elizabeth is meeting with the Finance Committee to present our budget and we'll be back at 6:20 to meet with Linda Letty from Conservation to talk about drafting the Earth Removal Bylaw, yay! So we'll take a short recess. Okay, all right, we're back. So, let's see, we've got Linda Letty at 6:20. So, under Open Space Plan ADA Coordinator, do we have anything on that?
Yes, so we have to formally name an ADA Coordinator and I spoke with Jim Mulcahy and he said that he was fine with that. A lot of communities have their Highway Superintendent person do that sort of thing. And he also suggested that we incorporate that into the job description for when the position becomes appointed.
Okay.
So, that would just be a simple vote, just to designate him in that capacity and then that'll satisfy the requirement for the Open Space Committee that they need for the updating of the plan, they need to provide that name to the state.
Does it need to be an annual appointment or can we just appoint here?
You can just designate that the person who's filling in the Highway Surveyor role, soon-to-be Highway Superintendent role, will serve as the ADA Coordinator unless something otherwise takes place.
Okay, all right, want to do that right now?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the Highway Surveyor or Highway Superintendent will serve as the town's ADA Coordinator.
Say.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. And we're without Bree tonight, so...
Yes.
Unfortunately, Liz is multitasking.
That's you, Ma.
Yeah, I think I'm taking notes just to take some pressure off.
Okay, the next item, let me pass these down.
Thank you.
So, those are the two zoning bylaw-related articles that the Bylaw Review Committee has prepared. So, tonight, I would just be looking for a simple vote, just to simply forward them to the Planning Board for proper public hearing, advertisement, and really just to commence the process. So, your vote tonight has nothing to do with the merits of the articles, it's just simply to send them along to Planning Board and then they get the process started, they have a properly posted public hearing, and so on and so forth. And I do have a letter drafted up that you could sign that goes to the Planning Board that just simply says that you voted to forward them along. And they need that date for Mass General Law, they have to be able to show the AG's office when the Selectmen forwarded the articles to Planning Board.
Okay.
So, that would be today's date.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we forward the two Planning, the two Bylaw Review Committee zoning articles to Planning Board for review and processing?
Yes, and ultimately they'll end up on the Town Meeting warrant.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
So...
So, that one, if you could sign the front.
Are we all signing it?
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're into Town Administrators' Updates.
Okay, so you started the meeting?
Yes.
We did. You're on for 6:20 on the button.
Yeah, 6:20.
Okay, I didn't know if I should hang around.
Nope, you've got 10 minutes, you can go.
Okay, correspondence and my update. I was looking to have the Board hopefully vote tonight to open the warrants for the Annual Town Meeting and the Special Town Meeting, which are scheduled for Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM respectively. I was hoping to get a memo out to everybody tomorrow, just stating that the warrants are open and that they should be sending us articles. I do have the last year's drafts to go by, I dug that up from Dale's files. One thing, though, that we should think about, it looks like in the past he would have you vote to formalize the warrant, it looks like the last meeting in April. And based on all accounts from here, I spoke with Tara and a few other people, they said that that's just cutting it way too close.
Yeah.
So, I was thinking if we set a date to close the warrant, maybe on Thursday, the 29th, at the close of business, assuming that prior arrangements haven't been made. And then that way, if we have placeholders left or whatever, that would be okay, but I think generally speaking, we want the bulk of everything by the end of March. And then ideally, at our April 2nd or April 9th meeting, we could formalize the warrant, depending upon if we still had a place.
So, what's the 29th again, April?
We would, 29th of March, tell people to please have their warrant articles turned in for us for assembling the draft warrant. And then if you could vote on it, maybe April 2nd or April 9th. That would also leave more time for Council to review the warrant, rather than having, than if they have changes that need to be made, at least we're not bumping up against when it goes out to print.
Okay.
As long as we've got placeholders in effect, we should be all right.
Right, and we'll let people know that, too, in the memo, we'll say, you know, if you know that you're going to have an article but don't have the finalized text for it, please send us something so that we can properly plan ahead for that.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to take a vote formally to do that, if that was something that you normally did, but if you wanted to vote to officially open and then have a likely closing date of March 29th.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
So, I make a motion that we open the warrant for the Annual Town Meeting tonight. And that it closes? And that it closes...
Tentatively?
Tentatively, March 29th. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Hi. A couple of comments on that, it's kind of scary how quickly this is catching up with us now.
Oh, my gosh, I know, it's almost March already.
And you know how busy it gets between budget and preparing for that, so, one, I, some of this maybe we have to discuss next week, but I think the Town Meeting warrant should be on the agenda every week between now and at least closing, if that's all right.
Sure.
And then, just on the slightly bigger level, with time being so short and with so many things up in the air, I feel like we all have to discipline ourselves not to add anything to the plate that isn't absolutely necessary.
I agree, for this next chunk of time.
It's just, and then, lastly, maybe I could ask about this next week, but I think we have to do something with marijuana warrant.
Yes, we do.
If only continuing the moratorium, so, I don't know if we want to discuss that tonight or on next week, but I think one of us, I'm glad to do it, probably needs to be in touch with Town Council to see what she's recommending.
Well, I think she did recommend that, Amy Questle, when she was here, that we could extend the moratorium.
We could extend the moratorium, she suggested, we have until June, she suggested until December. I'd like to be a little clearer on what happens after that.
Okay.
Certainly, there are a bunch of towns that are considering bans of recreational marijuana sale, and I think maybe that has to at least be considered or discussed, but, so, I don't know, should we put that on the agenda for next week and then I could ask permission to speak to her next week?
Because I think we could do both, we could do the moratorium and we do a warrant article, because it will take time for the warrant article to be approved by the AG, so that way, you've given yourself some extra time so that it can complete the process.
Yep, so, I mean, that's one more of my example, that's essentially four weeks to get this all straightened out.
All right, so, we'll put that on next week's agenda, then.
Okay.
Recreational Marijuana.
The Green Community audits are taking place all this week. We hope to be able to submit a grant application for the March 9th deadline. It's really kind of being cut close and we're still waiting for Seth Pickering to get back to us as far as if there's any funding available for Old Colony Planning Council to actually assist us with the submittal or not.
Okay.
So, there's a lot kind of up in the air, but everybody seems like they're working on it, so, I've been kind of staying on top of that. I was thinking I could update the Board, obviously, at the March 5th meeting, but it's possible if we have the go-ahead from the Energy Company that was recommended to us by the state and everything, that they may want to go ahead and start working on that application, if Old Colony has the funding in place and can help. So, I just want, I don't know that I need a vote necessarily, but I just wanted sort of the acknowledgement of the Board that we'll move forward with it as soon as time permits. I think it's better to get something together sooner rather than later. And it'll be from one of the projects that was already on the approved list, because they had the audit that they initially did. So, it'll be kind of picking from stuff that hasn't been done yet, but they are doing up-to-date audits, just to make sure that nothing conflicts or hasn't happened in the last few years that maybe negates the effectiveness of some of those projects.
All right, I've got an Old Colony Planning Council meeting on Wednesday, so, I can ask Pat, so, this would be funding to help with the Green Communities Grant Program?
Yes, so, Lisa Sullivan has been instrumental in helping us get back on track with the Green Communities Program.
Okay.
And Pat was kind enough to offer her services at no cost, temporarily, to get us back on track, but I don't know if they have, basically, if they have anything left as far as that's concerned. I have a meeting on Wednesday in Fairhaven with the South Coast Managers Group and we're working on some different HR initiatives, so, that's a good group to belong to, fairly informal and you get a lot of good information out of that. I was looking at the March 1st Old Colony Planning Council meeting for the Joint Transportation Committee. I'll see how the schedule shakes out for the rest of the week, but I do think it's good to kind of be, at least in the loop on that, especially, too, where we have the change coming, where Jim's position's going to be switching from elected to appointed and everything, just to kind of make sure that there's continuity there and that sort of thing.
We don't have a rep, so that would be great.
Right, I went to their December meeting and it was interesting, just to get an idea of what projects are going on in this region. I used to go to them a lot with the other planning associations that those communities belong to, so, just good from a regional perspective, and then if there is anything that they could do our way...
Well, that's how you find out about a lot of these.
Exactly.
So, that's in Brockton, right at their building?
Yep, that's in Brockton, that's a daytime meeting that they have monthly typically. The 61A Write of First Refusal Response Letter was sent out last week to the property owner via certified mail and a courtesy copy was sent to their attorney electronically today, so, we should be covered as far as the response and meeting that timeframe. I've been spending a significant amount of time with Deb Anderson and Alan Wheelock as far as the Bylaw Review Committee in drafting the public hearing notice for the articles and also chiming in on some suggested wage and personnel bylaw updates, and I'll get copies of that for this, where they haven't voted on anything officially, but there were some things, I think Barbara sent John copies of some of it, just some changes that they were looking for to some of the policies.
Wage and personnel?
Yes, so, just kind of keeping tabs on that and seeing where everything's at.
Next meeting, we should just touch on that.
Okay.
You know, make sure we're all on the same page. So, you want that to be on the agenda? Yeah, it'll only take a couple of minutes, I think.
I'd like to put that on the agenda, too, the policy for 61A.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, on dates to remember.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to.
Or might as well bring it up now, I actually, two weeks ago, I passed this out and we didn't get it on the agenda for tonight, but I'd love for everyone to look at it and then talk about it a little and maybe get it off to the attorneys, they may well want to do something totally different, but...
It's a very good start.
Yeah, I think it is a good place to start.
Yeah, I read it, I thought it looked really good.
So, maybe I'll put it on the agenda, we can vote on it, I'll be ready to get it to the attorney next Tuesday.
Perfect.
And then, for correspondence, we have quite a few things here, let's see.
Do you want to take a break and get to Deb and then we'll go back to correspondence after we have Deb?
Uh, Linda.
Linda, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, let's do that.
But we need to get you done by 7, right?
Yeah, they said to come back before 7.
We can always do the correspondence ourselves, too.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Linda, it is 6:20 and we're ready for you and Amy.
You guys are great. Thank you for taking time.
Do you want to refer to that?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Do you guys all know Amy Cronin?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Amy and I are here tonight with our Conservation Commission hats on, and I'm also here with my additional hat as I'm Chair of the Open Space Committee. And so, and the reason I refer to that is because the Earth Removal, or, you know, Bylaw, we have been working on sporadically, because the update of our Open Space Plan, which was due last year, in 2017, had been reviewed by the state, as you know, it gets reviewed by the state agencies. And they said, you know, your current bylaw is adequate, it's fine, but you're not keeping up with the level of information that other towns provide to people, and you should be doing that. So, it had already been on our agenda that we were sort of poking along, looking at Earth Removal, and we decided recently, maybe we should put that on a front burner to really understand what other towns were doing. So, that's what we're giving you an update about tonight. It's been really interesting to look at this, we've spent about, you know, the last month or so, we've looked at 20 to 30 towns and their bylaws and their regs, to some extent. So, we've learned a lot just doing that, and there, and we tried to focus on towns that were more like Plimpton, you know, that were rural and had small population and lots of land and not great staff, you know, a lot of staff and all that kind of stuff. And we ended up finding, through the Planners Collaborative, as well as Mass Association of Conservation Commissions, they provide sort of direction and overviews to both issues and policies you should be looking at, as well as other towns that have coped with this. So, that helped us really zero in, and we ended up drafting these bylaws based on piggybacking our work, particularly on three towns, Hubbardston, which is, I think, a little bit west of Worcester and between, you know, Worcester and the hills, and south of the Turnpike, Sutton, and Marshfield. And I'd say roughly 50% of what we borrowed, took, modeled, is from Hubbardston, 40% from Sutton, and 10% is a mixture of Halifax, Marshfield, Dunstable, I mean, we took good little things here and there, because what we were looking at is what pertains to us and what would be applicable to our kind of town. So, we have drafted it, but we have, the Conservation Commission is sponsoring this drafting, and so, we're meeting again tonight to look at the whole draft, and we will take the next couple of days or a week or so, just to finalize it and make sure that we all feel that it's the best we can do at this point. And so, within that timeframe, we will then send it to you, I assume electronically, and then you guys, is that what you want, then you guys will figure out how to take it from there. So, you might get it sooner than that, but probably, certainly by next Monday. So, what we've given you here is the outline of the draft bylaws as they now stand. So, you can see they have 13 sections, these are very traditional, when we looked at all the other towns, this is the way generally they're organized, and they certainly have the content like this. So, we've, this is what, this is what we've both learned about and are presenting to you, and I should say parenthetically that both Amy and I are not earth, we're not lawyers, we're not Earth Removal experts or anything, we, we are, I think, pretty good at scouting out what else is out there. And the good thing about this is that everything that we've taken has been approved by the Attorney General, because these are all approved bylaws and they're all quite recent, very, very recent. I think Hubbardston might have been 2016, Sutton maybe 2014, I forget the dates exactly, but they're not old, they're very current. So, that helped us to make sure that, you know, we would be staying up to date on that. So, given that big caveat, that we're not experts, but we've learned a lot and can tell you as far as we've gone, there will be some issues that you will be seeing when, when we get this to you in the next week and that we'll probably give you a cover memo again to remind you. Probably the primary issue that you'll want to be looking at is the authority to grant a permit in the town. Right now, state law allows the authority to either be the BOs, the Selectmen, or a designee of the BOs. We hear the rumor that at a few places, it's CONCOM, we are not looking for that, I should say, but, and I've never, we have not found any towns that do that, but the BOs can designate another Board if they want to, or, and we've seen that in the towns we've looked at, probably 60 to 70 use the BOs percent. Some use Planning Board. And really, we're a little bit more like the, a split, because BOs here in our current bylaw, which is under our municipal bylaws, it's the general bylaw, is the authority, but under zoning, which is our, under zoning bylaws, under special uses, there's a special permit provision under mining, and it's under prohibited uses, and then there's an exception for mining under certain circumstances, and ZBA would be taking that. But ZBA only does that for, apparently, we, as we understand it, in the relatively few towns that's split, they might do something like we've done here, which is to say, well, you figure out the zoning issue, but then the authority comes here. So, we can just tell you that there seems to be different ways of accomplishing this, it might be something that eventually we can all talk about, you can debate. We understand there are different statutory limitations that pertain to each one, and the statutory limitations on the planning slash zoning side are more constraining in some ways, they mandate certain ways of approaching it that may be what we want or not, but it comes with more you must type things or things that have to be, whereas the municipal one is broad and it lets you sort of find your own way. So, that's as far as I think we can say safely. The CONCOM is, in any case, the Conservation Commission, in all of these situations, is integrated into the decision-making, because so much of Earth Removal pertains to water, wetlands, and all those kinds of issues, that no matter who the authority is, the Conservation Commission gets a copy of the plan and has to sign off and give recommendations to, based on their sign-off of whether they think it's adequate or not. So, so, the water, wetlands provisions do get covered no matter which way you go.
Does planning have to sign off, too?
In most towns, you see that, or at least in a lot, we've, in our draft, we've included that, we think it's logical.
Good.
But sometimes we didn't see it, so, again, it's, sometimes the Planning Board was the authority, so, those kinds of refinements, I think you have to start, you know, debate, learn about it, and then start where you're going to have, you know, where's your thrust going to be, and then you fit everything else around it.
And Linda, if I can just add...
Yeah, please.
So, we put generically, the Board shall issue the permit, and then, so, let's say if there's a section where it says the Board shall do this, there may be some sections that say the Conservation Commission must sign off, or the Planning Commission must sign off.
That's right.
So, you know, in theory, we could do a search and replace whatever that Board ends up being, and then, you know, we can go from there, but right now, we try to keep it generic since we didn't really know how you guys wanted to.
Yeah, the Board is whatever you fill in, but in any case, the Planning Board and the CONCOM, we believe, the CONCOM really always is involved, and it seems logical that in most cases, you'd want to go to your Planning Board, but again, this is going to have to be refined. So, that's one issue. Another issue is called exemptions and exceptions, and that's a recognition that certain things go on in the town or under state law have certain privileges or certain constraints that have to be recognized in every town, so, they sort of go into two flavors. Exemptions are things like agriculture, develop of subdivisions, and municipal activities. They all have certain rules that control them.
Right.
And so, that doesn't mean that the town doesn't have input into those rules, and in fact, we found considerable variation among the towns in how they address those privileges, if you will. But think of those as privileged actors. They all have certain abilities under their own statutes that they can do, but there is an ability for the town to interact with them and to also place some, some rules, if you will, around them, and that varies. And so, we've, we've taken, again, looking at an experience of other towns like this, we've recommended what we think will work, but again, we're not expert at this and something we'll have to be learning. So, that's exemptions. Exceptions apply to any operations that are now acting like an Earth Removal operation in the town.
Existing, yeah.
Yeah, existing, whether or not with a permit or however they're operating, it recognizes these as being there. And again, you then have to figure out, how do you proceed? There's, most towns, you know, you have to acknowledge they exist, you have to have a transition, you have to deal with them as they are right now, and you have to move forward. So, we have taken a stab at doing that, and it's, I think it's fair to say that's the section we feel, because we didn't consult lawyers or anything, we looked the best we could, we gave you the best model we think we can, as we understand it, but certainly that'll require, we didn't even have any data to work from, we have no idea what really the town's status is.
We don't have any active...
You don't have any active...
Active gravel removal permits.
That we know.
But that...
That are authorized by this Board.
It's not just a permit, it's active operations.
Right. We don't have any active operations.
Okay, well, that may make life easier, because that's...
It'll be a pretty clean break, yeah.
Yeah, some towns, when they didn't, they could just, here's the new rules, but some towns had to make a transition, so, you'll know that and you can deal with that. The third issue is operational oversight, is that no matter who ends up being the authority, whether it's Planning Board or BOs, these kinds of things come with a lot of rules, you know, they come with hours of operation and even number of trucks a day, or noise, or you name it, there's lots of things that come into this, and it's not the sort of thing a Board can deal with operationally. So, all the towns that we've seen, I think, without exception, have appointed the Building Inspector to be that person, and whether that person reports to Planning or BOs, because you need a staffer if you have something like this happening. There are a lot of reports that are required that come in either monthly, that you want to go out and have an inspection, you want to make sure that the reports are coming in and giving you the data that's asked for, so, someone needs to be watching all that, and that's the Building Inspector, as far as we can tell, in most places. And so, that's, as you see, that, I've just covered out of the 13, those are the three big issues, the other ones are pretty straightforward, they're how do you apply, how does it get reviewed, how does the decision get made, and when you, if you get a yes, what are the conditions for operating? It doesn't, just because you get a yes, doesn't mean that you don't have to comply with certain standards.
Right.
If you get a no, what happens then, you know, so, this is just, the rest of it is sort of a logical decision tree type thing, so. And then, lastly, we are, as I said, we'll get our review done in the next couple of days or within the week, certainly, but the only thing that we'd urge you to start thinking about is a hearing under our current bylaw, or in our current Earth Removal bylaw, I think it's a seven-day notice to a hearing, but I don't know, you might want to look and see what's, how much time are you going to have to, you know, when are you going to have to post a hearing, and so that we get ahead on a clock, you know, so that we have the time to get input, you know, rewrite the draft, have decisions, and of course, we have to make sure we get on the warrant for March 30, if, as a holding place. And then, as I mentioned, of course, we have not had any legal review, so, this has just been us madly borrowing and we owe a lot to the towns of Hubbardston and Sutton, we should have them over for dinner, because they worked really hard, they seem to have very thorough, and a lot of other towns had really good ideas, too. We looked a lot at Halifax, Marshfield, they were great, and the other surrounding towns, yeah, we looked at every single one, and every one had good ideas, but after a while, they're repetitive.
Yeah.
So, you begin to say, oh, okay, we have it in the draft already, we don't, you know, you're there, so we didn't keep copies, but, so, do you have any more questions for either Amy or me?
So, next steps would be for us to review it.
When you get it, yeah.
And then, go directly to legal, you think?
Yeah, if that's, it seems to me that that would make sense, I mean, if there anything in terms of just missing logic, please get back to us, say, why didn't you put that kind of thinking in? And we'll scurry around and try to fill in the blanks, but other than that, I would guess that you might want to get to legal, or, I don't, yeah, I would think legal will read, it should hopefully, since, since we're borrowing from approved bylaws, hopefully we are not giving you a tangle, and...
We'll have to see if Hubbardston is a KP town.
We can find out which of those three, Hubbardston, Sutton, or Marshfield are KP towns.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea.
And mention it to them right away, like where it came from.
Our attorneys, keep you off. Yeah, that's a good idea.
And if I could just add to that review, I'd like to see them work hand-in-hand with us, not looking at it, what does this mean, hey, this doesn't make sense, you can't do this, I want, we're under the gun, so, hey, looks like you're trying to do this, here's a section I would recommend, because we don't have time for a review that isn't a partnership. So, and I've seen a little bit of that, and that's been frustrating to me, so, I think with the right guidance, they can give us what we're seeking as far as a review.
Yeah.
So, just so you have, Linda, do you think it'd be okay if I just, our draft purpose, just to get...
Oh, sure, 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 absolutely.
...this really, you know, sort of sets the tone of the whole thing. The purpose of this bylaw is to prevent the degradation of the town's natural resources, including its soil, surface, and groundwater, and naturally occurring... This really, you know, sort of sets the tone of the whole thing. The purpose of this bylaw is to prevent the degradation of the town's natural resources, including its soil, surface, and groundwater, and naturally occurring vegetation, due to the improper or uncontrolled removal or disposition of earth and vegetation, and to protect the right of every resident of the town, intention to enjoy clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise, and the natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic qualities of the environment, as declared in Article whatever of the Constitution, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Sounds great.
So, I think all of those factors are really in here, and I think that really sets the tone.
And again, that purpose is probably eighty or ninety percent from Hubbardston, with maybe a clause or two, but.
Sounds good.
It's been, yeah, it's, it's inclusive, so it shows all the concerns that people are likely to have.
Sounds really good.
And saying, and this is what, you know, and again, going back to the open space plan, we've polled residents now several, you know, three or four times over the last 20 years. And it keeps on number one, keeps on being, keep Plimpton rural.
Right.
You know, respect our, you know, sort of sense of community. And, and then the other one this year was water. Water and protect water, protect wetlands, because, again, we all have straws in the same, in the same pool down there. So, those were the two that came out of the open space plan, and this should dovetail with that.
So, the steps along the way, you have some more work to do, you're gonna get it to us. We're going to town council, hopefully, we'll get into a loop with a quick feedback. Once we're okay, town council's okay, you're okay, public hearing.
Yeah, which you, you might wanna look ahead if it's more than, maybe seven, fourteen, twenty-one, just so you can put it on a calendar.
It's a board of selectmen, public hearing.
Do we have to have a public hearing on a municipal bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that's just zoning.
No, I think it's in the current bylaw.
The hearing.
Is it in the current bylaw, says we have to have a hearing for a municipal bylaw? Oh.
That's unusual, if it does say.
It says, well, it may not be, no such permit shall, oh, maybe the permit has to be. No such permit shall be issued without seven days' hearing. But, yeah, municipal per se.
We'll just put it on the warrant.
You, to have it on the warrant, you don't have no hearing? Because I think you do through the planning, right?
No, that's only for zoning bylaw amendments.
This isn't zoning, this is municipal.
Would it be of any advantage to do that, to getting it done, or purpose?
The sole advantage is just maybe a sense of transparency, and, or at least some way to invite others in that may have concerns. And more importantly, there may be some expertise out there that we haven't tapped into yet, that at least should felt heard. So, whether, whether it's formally a public hearing, or just a.
Information session.
Clearly described discussion that's gonna happen.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you might wanna put it on a Conservation Commission agenda, and just kinda go over that, you know, what you formulated, and where it came from, and everything. But I would say it wouldn't need to be a public hearing, just a general, like, on your posted agenda for discussion.
Would you not, I mean, my Concom, Confrers are all around the room, so they should. But I, I would think that a, a public information session hosted by you guys would be more inclusive.
We could do that, too.
Because we don't do, we don't do the noise, and, you know, all the others, the signs, and, you know, we have our, we have our thing, and we're glad to do it. But this includes many things beyond that, that we wouldn't.
Yeah, sure, I think it'd be really interesting, yeah.
Maybe have a joint meeting when that happens, Concom and BOS together. That'd be great.
Great idea.
And I think in terms of input, I would feel more comfortable giving people a chance to raise their concerns, and as Mark said, lend their expertise. I mean, we've barred as best we can, but, you know, this is a beginning, and I would feel much more comfortable if people had a chance to talk about it, and ask questions, and make points.
Well, let's not wait too long, because the end of March.
A lot's going to hinge to on how long it takes council to review and get back to us. The only thing that would concern me would be council reviewing it, and by the time you iron everything out with them, that then we have an end product, and then are you, are you gonna?
Yeah, what do you do?
Do the hearing afterwards, and then change stuff, and then council needs to look again.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the only thing that I would.
Should we, Senate tentative, Monday night, meeting date, aim for a meeting?
Yeah, and to be honest, I think we have enough in here, that these are the traditional categories that all town bylaws deal with, the other, the other earth removal bylaws deal with. So, even if we have maybe not taken the right approach, it would be enough of it to, if you had a public information session, and people could read it or hear about it, they could still give their response, whether it, and we'd have to tell people, hey, we don't know if the lawyers are gonna go for it, but these are based on bylaws that have been passed. So, you could get some input earlier, rather than later.
So, three weeks from now is March 19th, which is a week before the, we're closing the warrant.
Oh, I think, Concom, Rick, John.
We have fire coming in, too.
Two Amys.
MRI's gonna be in here.
Around March 19th.
So, we wouldn't be able to talk about it then?
Do we know what time there, have we set that?
Six o'clock.
Is that a Monday? Yeah. Yeah, it looks like we'd have a Concom turnout for March 19th, so.
Yeah, we could put it on, and put it for after.
Seven?
Seven, maybe.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty, maybe.
Sure.
Okay, seven thirty, March 19th.
We're not here, right?
Now, I'll be away that day.
Okay.
But, I can find out.
Will they be presenting it to us and hear if people have questions about how it was drafted?
Uh, well, Amy, are you, are you?
I'm just checking my calendar.
Yeah, 'cause she's, she has it away, she's a job for a couple days away.
Okay.
But we'll, you know, we'll figure this out.
Okay, we can iron it out.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Okay, so, for now, I think we're just gonna send it back to you, and we'll start.
Thank you.
Thank you, feel your work.
I guess one more question. So, there, there is this issue of who the granting authority's gonna be.
The issuing, yeah.
And, so we're, we're leaving that open for the moment.
Yeah, we, we, we wrote it, as Amy said, with an anonymous board. But as I say, searching around, and I gave Liz a copy just now.
Yes.
Some message, because I'd written all over the original, of a little guidance from MACC about some of the different directions or constraints going BOS way versus ZBA, ZBA or planning way.
I didn't understand it. I mean, she and I have dived into this forever, and it seems like, I was telling somebody we were dreaming about it last night, it was making me crazy. I don't understand the difference, and, and I've looked at that document, I can't get it.
Well, I, I think I do, because I talked to them, too, some, it's, they're more constraints coming with zoning statutes. They just have rules about grandfathering, and what you have to allow, and it's a zoning. Zoning comes with rules, and they're statutory, and they're, they're pretty rigid. So, that's, some towns like it, some don't.
But even though it's a municipal bylaw?
No, yeah, well, there's, zoning runs under its own set of, of mass general laws. It's different than the mass general municipal laws.
But we put it under the easier ones.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's under municipal, the way you're recommending it?
Yeah, and that's where you, that's where we are right now.
That's what it is currently.
And frankly, and all, right now, it's really, zoning just does this special exemption if there's a certificate, and that might even still be that way, but it's more mechanical, they do have a say.
Right.
But the issuing authority is still BOS. And I think you'd have to ask more for a lawyer to explain this to you, because we don't have enough expertise to give you recommendations, but, on the face of it, BOS.
Last question, isn't there some name for that condition of dreaming about bylaws?
Yeah, it's called vacation, needing vacation.
That's funny.
It's been of a haul. So.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's been a huge haul.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you so much. For working hard to be here.
Would, would we recommend that the enforcement officer be zoning rather than the building inspector, though? Because that's who currently does our.
I made a note of that on my thing, too.
I wanna read it over and see where we are.
Okay.
It seems to me at the top, it's gotta be board of selectmen.
I agree.
With the other boards signing.
Absolutely signing all off.
I also am feeling that way. The regulatory piece certainly has to be there, but I think looking at the well-being of the town as a whole may be more our responsibility. So, I'm very much leaning that way, unless, unless expertise here, or from town council, feels differently.
I agree, I think sort of the narrow approach versus the broad approach. It seems to be selectmen, especially in a town this size, you know, you're looking at the, sort of coherence of the whole town, and there are a lot of issues into that.
Right.
But, and Plinxy doesn't have, whether they want to or not, they have smaller, they have narrower mandates.
Right.
So, it forces some issues to be more careful.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think we're on the same page.
Board of Selectmen. And then I think that the enforcement will be zoning enforcement rather than the building inspector. The zoning enforcement officer.
I think, I'd like to read it first, before we make.
But we can see.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
I, I mean, why did you choose one of the other?
Because he's the one who currently does our inspections. When we inspect gravel permits, we go out with Bob Carling, who's the zoning enforcement officer. He's the enforcement officer.
And we have very specific things that he would need to look at.
The criteria of the permit. So, you know, that's, we can read that and figure it out.
Yeah.
That's something, that'd be an easy change. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Get back to us if we, something dangling that we should try to fill in.
I doubt we do.
Sure it's gonna be great.
I'm sure it's gonna be great, too.
Ask questions, Vanello, that I'm sorry, should be able to just answer yes or no.
Perfect.
Probably good late-night reading, you know, if you're a little tired.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's been a free one.
Thank you. All right, so back to correspondence.
Sure.
Are you got 15 minutes?
Do we have anything else we have to do with?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we have a letter from Chief Dillon requesting appointment of Frederick Glenn and Scott D. Nicola to the position of Special Police Officer, effective immediately, invalid through June 30th, 2018. And this just explains that it will help the chief out with coverage during parades and other special town events. So, there are two places marked out in here for you to sign.
And these are both specials?
They're both special.
Okay.
So, we need a vote?
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Frederick Glenn and Scott D. Nicola as Special Police Officers, is that other dates?
Sorry.
Through June 30th.
Through June 30th of 2018.
Second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have.
Well, you know, this brings up something that Bree isn't here, but she was commenting on that we tend to go too fast when we do the signing, that we jump off to the next thing, and we tend to sometimes miss, like there it is.
Like you missed the signature.
And, so I know tonight, we're, we're in the interest of time, but Bree had asked in the future.
She asked that we wait, when we sign.
Yeah.
Sure.
And be done with that before we go on to the next thing, which makes sense.
Very good request.
Okay, let's see. Also, in correspondence, we have Protection One is going to update the fire panel in the building, essentially replace it with what's there now. That's all that the insurance company would authorize. They would not authorize, like, a full replacement of the whole system. That quote came in less than sounder system. And Bree's already submitted the info to the insurance company, but I just wanted to keep the board apprised as to what was going on, and assuming that that's okay for me to sign off on that quote and get that work done. And that should pretty much wrap up the water damage repairs at this juncture.
So, that's the panel that's out here?
The red panel out here. And we currently have Protection One, so.
Okay.
There's like no change in service or anything like that.
So, you need a vote on that?
Um, I don't need a vote so much as I just want to let you know, I can sign the quote.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let you know what was going on with that.
Thank you.
Then we have an email from Jane Devlin stating that a polar truck entered the Rocky Harvest site this morning at 6:40 a.m., which is another violation of their agreement. And as such, I have updated the letter that the board sent them last time for the violations, and I didn't know, I wanted it handy in case you decided to send them another letter documenting the current violation that took place today.
All right, I'll make a motion that we send Ed Rose at Rocky Harvest a notice of violation of the terms of the settlement agreement.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I called him today and told him as well.
So, this is, we're signing this?
So, this is since January 25th, this is the sixth report of trucks being in there too early. So, my question is, when do we look at going to arbitration? And it's probably a question for council, I just don't know, you know, what, how, how many times this has to happen before we go to the next step?
Do you want me to inquire with council?
Well, I don't know how Mark and John feel about it.
Were you, were, you were going to be in touch with him, or?
I, I called Ed today and left him a message, and went to voicemail, but I told him if he had any questions, to give me a call. I didn't tell him we were gonna send him a letter, I have told him that the other times that I've spoken with him. I can certainly let him know that, I don't, well, what I'd like to find out first is if, if we have enough violations to go to arbitration. If we do, then I'd like to give him the notice that, you know, if we have another report of violation, that that's the direction we're gonna go, or that's the direction we're gonna go now. We've had six violations.
So, I guess that's the question, whether that's enough violations to go to arbitration? So, that's, that's up to town council, right?
Well, say we go to arbitration, I mean, then what happens?
We, it's a, we would be responsible for our legal fees, and Rocky Harvest would be responsible for their legal fees. And we would present this to an arbitrator, and they would decide whether or not there would need to be some type of monitoring to prevent early withdrawal of water. I mean, it could be anything, things that we asked for. The arbitrator, I believe it's from the, like, Association of Arbitrators, that I think.
We have to each agree on it, right?
Right, that we would each agree on it. It's cheaper than going to court, it's faster than going to court. And it might provide some resolution here. It's not, it's never gonna go away, this, they're not gonna say, you have to shut, there's no more water withdrawal. But there has been consistent violation of the terms of the settlement agreement in respect to the hours of operation.
Yes, the only reason I'm hesitating is, I feel like we're gonna start spending legal dollars.
We will.
Yeah, and we're, I don't think we're sure of a footing yet. And I'd like to get a little more legal input on the footing, and then make the decision.
I agree, I, I agree.
I don't, I'd like to hear his response. I mean, I, we're just getting sucked into the same thing, the exact same thing, all over again.
Yeah, we spent a fortune in.
And we spent $85,000, we wanna get him to comply. I just, I'd love to hear what he, how he responds, either to you or to our letter, before we go, before we jump into arbitration.
Do you want to see if he'll attend a meeting?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll see if we can get him in here.
Okay. Do you wanna?
I can call him and invite him to come in, that we wanted to talk about this, and that, you know, we'd like to get this resolved, and, and hear any suggestions that he's got on, on doing that. Okay, all right, so, what do we have next week? Do we have anything on the agenda? Do we have appointments yet?
Not for the fifth, we do have a 5:30 regarding highway.
Okay, okay, so 5:30, we're meeting with Jim on 3-5. So, we could have him here at like 6:15, okay.
Wanna try that?
Yeah, I'll try to see if he'll come in, and if not, then I will just ask him what he intends on doing, and I'll report.
Beautiful.
We also have a letter from the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, letting us know the rates for the 18-19 school year out-of-county tuition. It's $22,286 per student. And currently, we have two students enrolled there in the school system, but they're in grade 12. So, I'm not sure that this new rate will have any effect on us. Nonetheless, I would recommend that Bree forward this to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, so that they have it.
You're not copied on it?
For their records. They do not appear to be, no.
Yeah, okay.
Well, does that, would that go to Silver Lake, or would that go to the Denit?
I think both.
Well, it's for high school students.
But I got a feeling it's gotta be, go through the Silver Lake Regional.
Because it's high school students.
Okay, okay.
So, I think we should forward it along, just so that they're aware of the rates.
The elementary does the out-of-district, it's just for special ed that they are responsible for, not vocational.
Correct, this is grades nine through 12.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
That are going to that high school.
All right, sounds good.
We also got a notice from Mass Housing that there are some grant opportunities available for communities that have not reached the subsidized housing inventory percentage.
This is the ten percent, is that what?
Ten percent, they actually, if you're less than thirteen percent, you can participate. So even if you've met the ten percent goal...
Wow.
But you're not up to thirteen, you can still participate in the grant program.
Has anybody met the ten percent?
I think Cambridge has.
Some communities have. I know Rainham's really close, so some people are right there. I didn't know, I know we have a lot on our plates, but I think that maybe we want to come back to this, even if it's a parking lot type thing, to see if they have any initiatives that they could fund for us or do something to help us, either strategically plan for housing or something. We have a letter from the State's Division of Capital Asset Management, just asking if we have any space available for them to lease out. They're looking for almost twelve thousand square feet of usable area for administrative garage and storage. I couldn't readily think of anything, but I just wanted to put it out there.
They could lease out Cisco or something.
We have a copy of a letter of commendation issued by Chief Dillon and the Plimpton Police Department to Officer Daniel Hoffman for his heroic and life-saving actions on January nineteenth at the scene of a very serious motor vehicle crash with entrapment. So that's a nice thing that's going in his file.
Terrific, very nice.
Also, along the lines of nice things, we have a letter from the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association recognizing Plimpton Town Clerk Tara Shaw for receiving her certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk designation, and she's actually going to be celebrated at a conference in Plymouth on June fourteenth.
Oh, that's nice.
So that's nice for her, too. And then also nice, we have a lot of nice things in Plimpton.
That's nice.
Right.
We have a letter from an individual named Carlos Silva, who wishes to personally thank Police Officer Douglas Missola, as well as Animal Control Officer Frank Bush for all their work in getting his dog back to him. So they were reunited, lost dog, and they, they got him back, so.
Is it the one that the signs are up all over the place for now?
I don't think it's the bulldog.
Okay, okay.
Then we have here, just an FYI for the board, that the pension fund contribution for Town of Plimpton was set at four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Barbara and FinCom are handling this, but it was just an FYI and in our correspondence. As far as the warrants that were signed, I just wanted to make note that we did pay the Area Fifty-Eight franchise fee of fourteen thousand, twenty-six dollars and thirty cents. That was kind of a big one, so.
Which one?
Area Fifty-Eight franchise fee.
I mean, we paid it, but that, they paid us, Comcast paid us fourteen thousand.
Right, it's that arrangement.
And we transferred it.
So it's a wash.
Right, it's a wash, it doesn't cost us any money.
And in fact, that's actually a couple thousand dollars more than we expected back at the beginning, coming in, so it's good.
Yeah, so it works, and Barbara's making sure that for next fiscal year that that account, she had explained how it was classified originally as one type of account, and she's taken care of that, so that's all set.
That was two years of legal work to get that mess figured out.
And then in conclusion, Plimpton Halifax Express talks about the Old Town House Restoration Project that will be brought to annual town meeting for a vote. They published more Tales of Old Plimpton, and the Silver Lake Regional Boys and Girls Track Teams both set new school records at a recent state.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Very nice, okay.
You have a minute and thirty seconds. All right, well done.
You stayed right on it. All right, any other business?
Can get some water, is it coming in at seven?
No, I'm going there.
This is going. All right, so under dates to remember, our next meeting is, open session will be three-five, we're meeting an executive session at five-thirty, then we're meeting three-twelve, three-nineteen, and three-twenty-six. Board's goals for coming year, economic development, I don't think we've got anything new to report on that. Financial management, I don't think there's anything really new on that one either.
The only concern I have is, we've got a lot of things we've been doing, spending, and we've got the budget coming up. We somehow need to get our hands around where we are. Are we out of control, or are we okay?
Are we on track, right. All right, public safety.
Subcontractor bids opened twelve days ago, the key is Wednesday, or yeah, this Wednesday, general contractor bids are opened at five p.m. Big day.
That is a big day. All right, grants, anything?
No.
Okay. Volunteerism?
This isn't really volunteerism, it just states to remember, there's a legislative session of MMA Friday, Fairhaven, which I'll run down to.
Oh, great, thanks, Mark.
It's a nice update, nice chance to just compare notes with everybody.
A nice little town.
Yeah.
All right, technology?
I understand that Michael Rodriguez was in today. We've started installing the computers, we've got seven of them. We're going to start with the building agent down, so Kathy Wright will get her new one, then that machine, which is old but still workable, will be given to the building agent. He hasn't got one right now, and we were originally going to give him dials, but Michael is using that for another project, so. And then we'll go across and give everybody installed.
Okay.
They'll all be on Windows ten with all the office software.
Very nice.
That'll be good.
Yeah, I'm sure that they will appreciate having some nice working equipment.
Before we get on to, well, minutes, let's, go ahead.
Okay, well, all we have for minutes would be the executive session minutes, because I don't think we've received any minutes from Bree, did we?
I didn't receive any.
No, I didn't either.
I read the executive session, they were fine.
Okay.
If, I suppose we can do it if everybody's okay, then I make a motion, we accept the executive session minutes for February twenty-second and February twelfth.
As written, yep.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll hold these other two regular session minutes. All right, selectmen, anything before we go to rants and raves?
I didn't, it just went out of my mind.
Okay, it might come back.
It's old age, it's...
It's not old age, there's just too much going on, especially this time of year.
I know one thing I would, like, we've got this machine that projects up there, and when we do things like Linda Letty's got this, we should be projecting that, so the people. So I think from now on, it should be a given that that'll be available here.
That's interesting you mention that, because I thought of that as I came in today. I think the new table's there, and it just looks so professional over there, and...
We've got it, we spent a lot of money.
Absolutely.
And we have to appreciate Mr. Trainers' efforts to make that happen, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so when we review it, let's, we'll put it up there.
Good.
Perfect, that sounds great. Okay.
I'll ask Elizabeth in each meeting to make sure that it's available, up and ready to go.
Okay.
Even if we don't use it.
Okay, all right, yeah, that sounds great. All right, rants and raves, do you want to go first?
Haven't really thought about it.
Well, I can jump in then. I am reminded, and have been speaking a little both to Linda Letty and Amy Cronin, and they have worked so hard on the earth removal thing on very short notice, and they are two amazingly talented women that just can buzz through a huge amount of work, and so I think we and all the towns should be incredibly appreciative for all that they're doing.
Absolutely.
That brings up the whole volunteerism in this town. I have never seen anything like it in any other town, and when you go talk to other towns, they're just amazing, they can't fill boards, and here we've got people that are putting in this time for no money. It's amazing. I mean, it's, we run this by volunteers.
We sure do. Well, and that was going to be my rave as well, and how two people can make a difference. And, you know, you, people sit at home and they think, oh, you know, what can I do? But these two women stepped up, they are extremely active, I mean, Linda's already serving on, what, two boards? I think Amy might be as well.
Yes, she's on the bylaw, too.
And she's got a lot of other things going on, too, but they saw the need, they stepped up, they got it done, and, you know, how grateful we are as a town that they are willing to do that for us, and, you know, it's just, they are, they're amazing women, and I'm so grateful that they were able to help us out with this and get us going.
We should have a, sort of a volunteer day or something.
Appreciation Day?
Appreciation Day, something to think about for the summer months, or somewhere down the line. Anyways, it's my thought, it's great.
It is, it's fantastic. Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, we'll see you next week.